A couple of days ago, yeah, but still I bathe. That's right. Yeah? Okay.
Council Chronicles.
I have a whole, matter of fact, I got two more. Past appreciation was October, and so the congregation gave me two new vests.
Vaporsan vests.
Vaporsan vests. I walk around with a thumbnail. Mammel Minute by Vaporsan Vest.
I would like to call the Mammel City Council meeting to order. The first order of business is to, well, first I need to let you know that our city council member, Anderson, is still not with us tonight. He's still ill, and so we need to remember him in our prayers. And also, at this time, we'll have the invocation and pledge of allegiance. And I'll lead us in that tonight. Our most gracious heavenly Father, we're thankful for this day, Lord, and we're thankful for this community in which we serve, Lord. We'd ask you to be with us tonight as we conduct the city's business, Lord, and help us to do it with the wisdom that you've provided us, Lord. We'd ask you to be with the people of Sutherland Springs, Texas, Lord, the church shooting that took place yesterday. Be with those families that are affected by that, Lord. You know, one family lost eight members of their family, Lord, and so we can only barely understand how that they are grieving over this process, Lord. We'd ask that you comfort them and heal them as only you can. We'd also ask that you be with the Batesville police officer that was wounded Friday night, all of our officers and our firefighters that provide services to our citizens, Lord. Every time when they go out on a call, they don't know when they're going to encounter something like that or encounter a life-threatening situation, Lord. So we ask you to watch over them and keep them safe and protect them. We also ask that you be with our military that are serving our country overseas. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have no special guests and announcements tonight. Next item is approval of the minutes of the October 16th regular meeting. You have a copy of those minutes in your packets. Are there any additions or corrections to those minutes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second to approve the minutes of October the 16th. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them, favor, please signify by saying yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is public comment. I have about eight public comment cards here tonight, and all of them are on items that are on the agenda except for one, and so we'll hear from that one at this time, and then we'll hear from the other ones as we get to the items that they have referenced in their notes. So our first public comment will be from Mr. Ralph Kearney. You'd state your name and address for the record, please.
My name's Ralph Kearney. I live at 35 Club Manor Drive. I'm a resident for 37 years here in Mammel. What I want to bring to attention is the deterioration of Club Manor Road. There, especially in front of number two on Club Manor, it's really busting up pretty bad. Also, I have a suggestion to be considered for our traffic flow through Mammel Boulevard, which we're all aware of. I was thinking, I travel a lot, and I see a lot of these roundabouts, and somewhere between 430 and 365 is levered traffic lights. I thought if we consider some of these spots for these roundabouts, it might improve the flow on Mammel Boulevard. And on Mammel Boulevard, I live near where South Odom and Mammel Boulevard, there's a light. And coming from South Odom, there's really fast change, and a lot of people are rushing to get through there, and it's really running a risk of accidents occurring there. I think a lot of them already have. With that consideration, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kearney.
Is that P.O.A. or is that us, Mayor?
What do you mean, P.O.A.?
Club Manor.
No, it's a city street.
Okay.
Next item is a financial statement review, and we do that at the second meeting of the month. Next item is a procedural motion. I need a motion from the floor that reread all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight.
Removed.
Have a motion and a second to read all resolutions and ordinances by title only tonight. Is there a discussion on that motion? If not, all of them, favor, please signify by saying yes. Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. We have no unfinished business moving on to new business. We have several ordinances that relate to a sales tax, and I have seven cards that are on that items, on those items, and so we'll hear from them after we do the first one, first reading of ordinance number 944. But first, I need to clear up something. There's been some misinformation put out on Facebook. There's also, I think, some misconception of what an emergency clause constitutes. Emergency clause does not mean that the rules are suspended, and the first, the second and third reading are done also tonight. Emergency clause means that the ordinance goes into effect immediately upon adoption and not wait the 30-day referendum. And so, but some people took the emergency clause to mean that there was going to be three readings on these ordinances tonight, and that is not the case. There's no plan to have, suspend the rules, to have the second, third reading and vote on that tonight. And then there's also some question, I guess, of whether this actually goes for a public vote. And so that's what one of the cards said. They wanted me to clarify that. What the council would be doing if they adopted these ordinances would be putting the sales and use tax to a vote of the people, so the council would not be voting on those sales tax to make them go into effect. That would be allowing them to go to a vote of the public. So I just wanted to clear that up. Also, because there was some confusion by the emergency clause, after consultation, our city attorney and our bond councils, they removed the emergency clause from the ordinances because there was so much confusion, and there's no reason for it to be there because our referendum is 30 days, not 90 days in some cities. And so with the timing of when the proposed special election would be done in March, there would be no reason for the emergency clause to be needed with these ordinances. So you now have a revised or a new copy of the ordinances at your desk that were different than what was given out to, or was included in the packet. So is there any question on that by the council? Okay. All right.
Just having something I wanted to.
Oh, okay. Councilmember Vaporsan.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to let the audience know, first of all, we're very, very glad that they're here for their voice to be heard. This is a process. What we're talking about tonight is not new news to us because we're in the budget meetings that are open to the public. We're at the city council meetings that are open to the public. So be careful about misinformation and about knee-jerk reactions. This ordinance is not an ordinance to give a tax. This ordinance is an ordinance to give you the opportunity to vote for a tax. So whether you agree, disagree, is wonderful. We want to hear about it, but make sure the information that you have is clear and accurate because we want to do that to the best of our ability. That's what we're here is to represent you and your thoughts and our constituents. So we have thoughts and ideas. We know what our 15-year strategic plan says about growth, and if we're going to do that, then what we need to do, and this is what we've looked at, multiple avenues. And so we're most delighted that you're here tonight. Most city council nights, it's quite bleak in here unless we're talking about chickens or coyotes. But you're here, and we're grateful that you are, and we want to hear from each and every one of you, and thank you for coming. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Vaporsan. Okay, the first item that we have, first item that we have under new business is the first reading ordinance number 944. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammel, County of Pulaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 944, an ordinance providing for the levy of a one-half, one-of-percent sales and use tax within the city of Mammel, Arkansas, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto in declaring an emergency.
Not declaring emergency.
I apologize I didn't update my ordinance since the change.
We have Mr. Bill Spivey and Mr. Walter McSpadden with us tonight from the Wright, Lindsay, and Jennings Law Firm. And Mr. Spivey needs no introduction. He's been here quite a few times, but we're glad that he came out tonight, and so he's going to start the process, and then Mr. McSpadden, I think, is going to take over for this.
Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, Ms. Timmons, Mr. Norris, I'd also like to point out that Leanne Burnett, Ms. Leanne Burnett with Stevens, is here tonight, and I think probably may have some valuable information to share with you. If you'll give me just a moment for a personal note, unfortunately, I have been away from the office for most of the past 90 days with some illness. Fortunately for you, and fortunately for me, my partner, Walter McSpadden, was able to step up and step into this role, and I have spoken with one or two of you, and I apologize to my friend Alderman Mosley earlier for not getting back to him with some information. I hope I'm on the mend. It's not a, you know, a small matter, but at the same time, we didn't want it to delay you in moving forward. So rather than risk, even though I'm pretty sure I know all the answers, rather than risk that, I'm going to defer to my partner, Walter, and if there's something that I can possibly help with, I'll step up and do that. But let me turn this over to Walter, but we would invite, and I would echo the words of Alderman Vaporsan earlier, this is a process, and this is what this is all about. We talk about it. We try to get everything out of the table and give everyone the opportunity to get their questions answered, as we always have. So I'm going to kind of step back, let Walter step up. Let me introduce my partner, Walter McSpadden. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Spivey.
Thank you, Bill. And just so you know, Bill's not known for false modesty, so take it for what it's worth. Most of what I learned, I learned from him. So just briefly, what you have here are three ordinances that would, the first two pertain to a half-cent operating tax for public safety. It's fire, police, that sort of thing. It would be a continuing tax, a half percent. The first ordinance levies that tax. The second ordinance would call a special election on that tax. The third ordinance would be for a separate half-cent sales tax, which would be pledged to the retirement of bonds and cause an election on both the levy of the tax and the issuance of the bonds. The bonds would be for a sewer project, which you're all familiar with, and for the New Morgan interchange, which you've discussed at length. That's a summary of what we're doing. If you want any more, I'll be happy to answer any specific questions, but I just thought I'd give the upfront overview from several thousand things. So I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. McSpadden. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I've just got some kind of basic questions here. I don't remember having talked about this before as far as exactly what we're doing here. And so I'm not, I guess I'm not sure how many half-cent sales taxes we're talking about. Are we talking about one or two? Two half-cent sales taxes?
One would be permanent, one would just be for the bonds, and it would just last for so long it's the bonds.
Okay, so it would be a sunset? Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Okay.
The Arkansas statutes have a statutory procedure that require that bond taxes be taken off once the bonds are retired.
Okay. So what would be the first half cents is just for general things?
For public safety.
For public safety?
Well, it'd be for, it'd be for public safety and other things. I mean, it's, there's listed in the actual ballot title there, so.
I saw a number of things.
Right. But it's basically, I mean, and I'm kind of surprised when you say we hadn't talked about this, but.
Well, I missed that first budget meeting. Maybe you all talked about it before you called me up.
Well, okay. All right. Well, we haven't talked about it on the council floor necessarily, but, you know, the thought about the permanent tax would be a way to eliminate the community service fee possibly. So the community service fee would be eliminated, and this half-cent sales tax would provide those mechanisms. Now, the community service fee is earmarked basically for public safety. It's what that is earmarked for per the vote that was taken years ago, so.
Right, right.
Yeah. So, and that's what, I mean, that's what it basically says, so.
That's what we're talking about.
But basically, the permanent tax could go for any city purpose, in my mind. I mean, because it talks about capital improvements, it talks about operation, streets, trails, street lighting, and other related items, and just pay and secure the repayment of bonds by voters and all that. So, I mean, I think it could go for any city purpose, but it'd mainly be replacing the community service fee.
Okay, that's the first one, then.
That is the first one. That is correct. That is, well, that is 945, I guess, and 944 pertains to that one also.
Okay, 944 would only go into effect if the bond thing passes. Is that correct?
No. 944 goes into effect if 945's question is approved on the ballot.
Okay, still a little confused on all that. One of the things I wanted to talk to you gentlemen about was, we've got a 6.6 millage going that we financed a lot of things with here in the past, the senior center, the Council Massie Extension, and some things like that. And back when we did the last one, we almost put a pool on there, which would have been about $7 million, and we did strike that. So it seemed like back then there might have been capacity to add some more into that. Now, we've been paying on this, this method of financing here on these bonds for a couple of years, and one of the things I was hopeful of is that if we aren't going to get matching funds from the state on this, and we do have to do the interchange, then is it possible we could do the 6.6 to refinance everything and roll $12 million or something into that to do the interchange?
Let me, let me see if I can answer this. This has more to do with what's happened in the past.
Right.
And I owe you an apology because you and I talked about this two, three weeks ago, and I dropped the ball. I'm sorry.
Well, I don't know that you did, so go ahead.
Well, here, you're very kind, but let me, here's basically, particularly for members of the council, back, gosh, almost 20 years ago, some of you were perhaps on the council then, I know we've got some folks in the audience who remember this, the first major capital improvement program the city levied a millage of 6.6 mills, and the citizens of Mammel approved that. And went forward, I think, made some significant improvements to the community center, to the pool, and there may have been one other project. I'm, I'm sorry, I'm getting on up in years. I don't remember all these anymore. The city was growing rapidly. Taxes were going up each year, and because uncapital improvement bonds were required by law that any surplus that comes in, any windfall, go to reduce that debt, the bonds paid down rapidly. By 2005, they paid down sufficiently that was able to go back, we were able to go back with another list of projects and asked the voters to approve not only refunding the earlier bonds from 1999, I think, but also issue new bonds for these additional projects. This happened again back in, I think, 13, 14, and 15, and I remember precisely the question because Alderman Mosley raised it at that time, and a question about whether or not we were, I'm sorry, the city was somehow or another tying its hands a little bit. And I think at the time what we said was, and if I don't remember exactly what I said, I apologize, but we said that it would be possible at some point in the future, depending upon how much the then-to-be-issued bonds were paid down, that you might come back at a future date and once again ask the voters to approve yet another refunding and issuance. But what we tried to say was, but it will take a few years before that can happen. Now, what I think Alderman Mosley asked me to do, and which I didn't do, but what we will do and get you that information the next meeting, is to find out just how much those bonds had paid down. I don't know, I was talking to, very unfairly, I put Ms. Burnett on the spot. I don't know if she knows or if she's been able to check and see or not, but nevertheless, until those bonds are paid down sufficiently, that it would be worthwhile or that you could pay for some of your projects by asking the voters to yet again approve an extension of the 6.6 mills, then you wouldn't get enough mileage out of the refinancing to do these current projects. That's just simply arithmetic. Depends on how much money's come in, how much of the debt's been paid down. The answer to your question is maybe. We'll just have to look and see. But certainly, if not today, at a future date, this same financing mechanism, which relies upon not a sales tax but a millage, would be then again available to you, and depending upon how much free board, if you will, how much new money could be financed without increasing the same number of mills, you might go back to the voters again and ask them to once again, as you've done three times already, extend that tax.
Thank you very much for the history there. I think that was beneficial to everybody here, probably. Thank you very much. My goal has been to see if, and again, I'm still not sure we have a final word on whether we're going to get matching funds or not from the state on this deal, but, so I'm a little worried that we're moving a little too fast on some of these things here, but anyway, I appreciate your information here. Thank you, sir.
Sure.
I'll yield to other questions here.
But I did tell you, Councilmember Mosley, that the Howard Department would not match it till at least 2021.
We've seen nothing official. I'd kind of like to see us do the design thing. We had talked about that immediately after your last update, and I think at the time you were thinking about just waiting till we got the design phase, see how the, what they said about matching funds before we did any of this, but.
Well, I mean, I.
You're assuming they're saying no.
I am. I mean, I met with Mr. Bennett in July of this year, and he said not until 2021. And I conveyed that to you, so, yeah.
All right. Always looking for that surprise under the rock.
I understand. Councilmember Kelly, you had a question?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I do. Now, when we refinanced our bond debt the last time, bonds were very favorable as far as rates went. How does that compare now?
Like I always tell you, we don't sell bonds, and so I'm going to defer to Ms. Burnett. That's her question.
Okay.
Thank you. Again, I'm Leanne Burnett with Stevens. I appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight. I can tell you that rates are still at historic lows. I can provide you with some indices that'll indicate that for you. One of the biggest things we're encountering right now is with the proposed tax plan. There are some new limitations on refundings that haven't been in play before, and so that's kind of what's hot in the bond world right now. They've also, the tax plan talks about taking away the ability for 501(c)(3)'s to access the tax-exempt market, and so we're talking hospitals and private colleges. So there, I expect a lot of volume of Arkansas paper within the next couple of weeks. We had recently 12 school districts go after millage extensions or millage increases, and nine of those passed. So with that in the market, supply and demand, but I can still tell you I have several clients that have been very pleased with the execution of their bond issues.
So the federal tax structure could really affect us.
I don't know particularly about your issues. I want to look at your, the bond issues that Alderman Mosley asked about to see what the redemption provisions are on those. It may be that those won't, but with regard to private colleges and 501(c)(3)'s, absolutely.
Let me answer partially your question this way. In the past, when you've gone out to the voters and asked them to extend the millage, all of the refundings have been what we call a current refunding, which doesn't require some of the special provisions that what Leanne's talking about are contained in the proposed tax measure. So assuming you didn't try to do this right away, and there was, you know, another three or four years pause before you did it, it shouldn't have any impact unless they just do away with tax-exempt bonds altogether, which from time to time, somebody talks about doing. But the specific provisions, I think what Leanne's concerned about, what we're all concerned about, is because they could do away with these, there might be a rush to market, which could tend to force rates up a little bit. You just never know what might happen.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions, Councilmember Kelly?
No, sir.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt?
Thanks, sir. Mr. Mayor, I apologize that I've been out of pocket a couple of days, and I turned on my computer this morning to read the council meeting, and it's offline, so this is the first time I've seen this tonight, so I apologize for being. However, I remember a couple of discussions briefly about this that I've had both off-premises, and I believe I mentioned it briefly with the mayor. The, as I understand it, part of this is to take the place of our city, our fee, right?
That's my understanding.
Is to replace our city fees, right?
That's correct.
So this is the mechanics of what we're doing. What I'm, my, how many dollars do we estimate that this will raise, and what is the ultimate use that we're going to do with it? If I'm, you know, complete loss, so I'll let you tell me.
Probably not the numbers.
Do you want me to address that, Mayor?
You can address the numbers, yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I don't know that you can address the, all the uses, but yes, ma'am.
No, I can't. I can assure you. Okay, so looking at the history of your sales tax, we assume that a one-half cent would generate $1,181,000 a year, okay? So you have a half cent that is for public safety, and it's also going to be used as what we call coverage if bonds are issued by the other half cent. You with me?
Yes, ma'am.
And the whole reason for that is if you were buying these bonds, we're structuring these dollar for dollar. 50 cent tax, half a cent tax comes in, it's going to go out and pay debt service. Well, if you're buying these bonds, what happens if the tax drops a little bit? You want coverage. And so this tax over here will provide that coverage. Obviously, with the city of Mammel, the growth you've experienced, we don't expect that to be a concern. So the goal is to not need this for bond coverage, but to use it for the purpose that the voters vote on.
Right.
Right?
Is part of our money to be used, is it, did I understand that maybe part of it's going to be used for the interchange? Is that why we're doing that? No?
Well, the half-cent sales tax that's to retire the bonds will be used to pay for the interchange. The other half-cent sales tax that we keep saying is for public safety would be used only if there's a reduction in the sales tax collections to pay for the bonds.
Okay. So the raising of the sales tax would be okay if we take away the community fee? It takes that out of our, we don't have to pay for that anymore?
Well, the citizens don't have to pay that, if that's what you're referring to.
Yes, right, right.
Now, but let's be very clear. The community service fee is $6 a month. There's still a garbage fee that's attached to that. We're not talking about eliminating that garbage fee.
Right, right. I'm just saying that I wouldn't mind paying the tax, additional tax that I'm going to pay, provided I don't have to pay my community fee. It balances out. Am I saying that?
And that's, that's as a citizen, not as a council member.
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir, okay.
Yes, I'm speaking in their behalf, not me.
Yes, sir.
I'll throw furniture later. Okay, well, I appreciate your time, ma'am. Thanks for, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any other questions on ordinance number 944?
I may have some more after public comment.
Okay, all right. All right. And thank you all very much, and if you, if you all stick around, there may be other questions, so we'd appreciate it. All right, we have, I think, seven, I think there's six public comment cards, and some of them say ordinance 945 and 946, and some just say sales and use tax. I'm going to ask them to all come forward now, and if they want to talk about one of the ones later, that's fine also, but I would ask you to, I'm not going to put a hard time limit on you, but we would ask that you try to limit your comments to three minutes and don't repeat what someone else has already said, but we do want to hear from everybody. So at this time, we'll hear from the people that have filled out public comment cards. First one I have is Belinda Harris Ritter.
I'm Belinda Harris Ritter. I live at 103 Hibiscus Drive in Mammel, and I'm speaking to you tonight because I am a Pulaski County Election Commissioner. The Pulaski County Election Commission has a responsibility for every election held in this county, federal, state, local. We hire and train the poll workers. We can. in this county, federal, state, local. We hire and train the poll workers, we complete the canvas of returns, and we certify each election. There are three commissioners, and we oversee a staff. And in spite of what Councilmember Vaperson said, I've been to almost every single one of the city council meetings since June, and I've never heard any mention of a special election. I couldn't make the budget meetings. So maybe y'all talked about them there. But it was quite a surprise to see a special election March 13th, when it had never been discussed in this chamber. Before someone decided to have a March 13th special election, no one from Maumell contacted the election commission to see how much it would cost the Maumell taxpayers. No one called the election commission to ask about the timetable for training poll workers and whether additional trainings would need to be scheduled to train them for a special election. I'm familiar with Arkansas Code Annotated 2675208 calling for a special election within 120 days of passing an ordinance for sales and use tax. You have the ability to slow this down and adopt the ordinances so that the primary election, already scheduled for May 22nd, 2018, is within that 120-day period. In 2012, the city of Maumell had a special election for bond issues on October 9th. The state of Arkansas held a general election the first Tuesday of November 2012, just a month later. That cost the Maumell taxpayers $12,000. That was money that didn't need to be spent. If you request the election commission to hold a special election on March 13th, just two months before the state of Arkansas has scheduled a primary election, it will cost the Maumell taxpayers between $15,000 and $20,000. It will cost more than it did in 2012 because the payment to poll workers has gone up, and so has the cost of statutorily required advertising. Poll workers for the special election will need to be trained in January, and then the primary election poll workers will have to be trained in March. If you have your election in May at the same time as the already scheduled primary election, there won't be any cost to the Maumell taxpayers because the state will cover all costs for that election. And I'm speaking to you about this because I've been contacted by quite a few people over the last couple of days asking me about the cost of special elections. The people who have contacted me think the council doesn't know how to manage taxpayers' money, or you would not be pushing for a special election. That's just what they've told me. If you have any questions about the commission or expenses, I'm happy to try to answer them. But I'm specifically here just to address asking you to have the special election at the same time as the primary to save these costs for training and the actual special election. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ritter.
Okay.
Next public comment card I have is from Mr. David Ray.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and members of the council. My name's David Ray. I live at 3 Hornrim Place here in Maumell. And I hope to share with you why I feel a special election is a fundamentally unfair way to address this issue. A special election will result in needlessly low turnout and provide an uneven playing field for taxpayers. The playing field is uneven because many voters will not even know that a special election is occurring. And we all know that fewer casual voters show up at the polls in special elections because the benefit to them is dispersed. And this is not conjecture. This is a fact. The Arkansas Center for Research in Economics, housed at UCA, has done extensive research on special elections in Arkansas. And what their research shows is that in the over 900 special elections specifically to raise sales taxes in Arkansas since 1981, the average turnout in these instances is just 19%. That's compared with primary turnout averages of 26% and general election turnout averages of 44%. I think it's reasonable to assert that we should want more participation in our elections and not less. And there's an easy way to ensure that, and it's by not holding a special election. I would argue that even those that want a tax increase should want to hold it in conjunction with a primary or a general election because higher election turnout further legitimizes government action. No one should want citizens to feel like local government tried to sneak through a tax increase by strategically holding it at a date and time when they knew that there would be minimal participation. Such actions undermine trust in government in general and our elected officials in particular. I also believe there's no reason to hold a special election in the middle of March when there's a primary election on May 22nd. In my view, making taxpayers foot the bill for a special election when there's a perfectly good election just two months down the road indicates there must be another reason for choosing March 13th. And I think a lot of people could be forgiven for wondering if that reason is to try and self-select, to the extent it's possible, how many people participate. I hope that you take these comments under consideration and try and improve this ordinance before it's time to vote on it. I appreciate your time, and thank you for entertaining my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Ray. The next card I have is from Mr. Albert Wright.
Yes, my name is Albert Wright. I live at 153 Ridgeland Drive. Been a resident of Maumell since 2000. My concern tonight is exactly what they've been talking about. I have worked the polls for, I think, 12 years. Special elections, we usually take a book with us. We have, we take a lot of goodies to eat on, drink. We hardly do anything. I think at the last special election, I think we had less than 40 voters. And I just think, I cannot understand why it's so necessary to rush a special election, particularly after the two speakers ahead of me. So that's what I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Wright. Next card I have is from Mr. Birch Johnson.
I'm getting a little old. Can't see very well, but I got a couple of things to say tonight.
State your name and address for the record.
Oh, Birch Johnson at 38 Fairway Woods Circle. And I live with my wife Jackie, sometimes, most of the time. I'm not here to oppose the tax, but I'm here to point out, and I think the mayor clarified this, because I didn't see it in the agenda, that the community service fee is out of line. I'm not sure it was ever legal, but they said it was. It penalized the poor and apartment owners get killed with it. They pay more than someone that has a $500,000 or a million-dollar home for their services. So my opinion, if this measure approves, it ought to be with the elimination of the community service fee. If I remember at the time, we promised the community that it would be reduced at $2 per year and everything like that. But with this administration, it never happened. And it's sad because they, hey, and also, I want to point out something. Guess what? A lot of apartment owners raise their rent to match that. The apartment owners pay the community service fee for those people in some apartments, not all apartments. But there's some people just getting the real tail end of this. Now, I got to turn to the side. I got a big portion of the people do not pay the city's service fee. The mayor can give you a number. You know that. I mean, we have to sue them. We have to fight them in court. We have to do everything just to try to collect it. Let's get rid of that problem with this tax. I feel really good about the tax if we do it in a fairly professional way. Now, the mayor mentioned something to me tonight, sitting in the fan. We haven't raised garbage fees since 2005. They've been $18 since they were put in. We were quoted $23 in 2006. The garbage fee has never gone up. Hey, that's a legitimate fee that we're doing. Now, with all this in mind, the new tax, we will pay based on what we spend in Maumell. It won't be what we spend elsewhere. I have no problem with that. However, I have a problem with people running up to North Little Rock and paying 12% sales tax to eat. Why would you eat there and pay them 12? It's 11 now. I think it's going to be 12. So, hey, I'm for the tax because at least they'll be paying it here at home. Hopefully, if they, well, from the looks of some of our new restaurants, it's been pretty evenly distributed. At one time, as I said, we were told the people we would eliminate the community service fee, and it never happened. This is a time for us to get together, put it all together, and make everybody fair and raise the garbage fee, if you want to.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Next card I have is from Ms. Marion Scott.
I just had a quick question about something you said.
She put down Scott. I just read what she put down.
Marion Scott Coney, 118 O Sage Drive. Thank you for giving me an opportunity to speak. I've been reading a lot on Facebook the last few days, some of the misconceptions that are going on over the ordinances, some concerns, and I would like to address those if you give me just a moment. The half-cent sales tax is intended to eliminate the community service fee. I think we can get a commitment from all of our aldermen that if this half-cent sales tax goes through, that the community service fee will be eliminated. And I don't think anyone would mind putting their name on a piece of paper, vowing that to the public. And I also appreciate Mr. Johnson, former Mayor Johnson, bringing to our attention that it is sort of an unfairly distributed cost to the citizens. Do you know that nearly 77% of Maumell's workforce does not live in Maumell? And if we eliminate the community service fee, an individual or a family would have to spend $14,400 a year in taxable services and goods to make up for what a community service fee now costs them. So in a way, this is a tax cut, if you look at it that way. Also, that 77% of our workforce who comes into town and works in our city, they eat in our city, they buy gas in our city, they buy groceries in our city, they buy some goods and services in our city, some of that cost would be borne by people who are not citizens. So there again is another opportunity for our residents to look at that as a tax cut. So I think that half-cent sales tax is timely. I think it's important. And I think getting rid of that community service fee is the best thing we could do for our citizens. And it's still for public safety. You know, I sit in on the budget meetings. I was very taken aback by some of the comments that I read on Facebook this weekend about the city doesn't know how to manage its money. I'll tell you what, that just breaks my heart because I go to the council meetings, I go to the budget meetings, I see the agony that the group goes through trying to give all of these managers and directors the money that they feel they need to run their departments. And one thing that I have to say about the budget process in the city of Maumell, different from where I came from, is nobody pads their budget thinking, okay, I'm going to ask for 100 when I only need 50, and maybe I'll get 75. Our directors and managers don't do that. The majority of them, if they submit a budget, that's what they feel they need. And if we have to cut that budget to meet revenues, because we do, the revenues and the expenses need to balance. Now, we do make some capital expenditures out of our copious reserve, which we have right now. You know, we do do some capital out of that. But operating cost is covered by the revenue that's produced by the city. And, you know, I know what you go through. I applaud you for that. And anyone who has a question about that should come and sit at the budget meetings when they're making the kinds of decisions that they have to make. And where is all this frivolous spending? Where is this misspent money that the city is misspending? I didn't see any concrete examples of that. I would like to see some concrete examples of that so we can say, okay, maybe we are doing something wrong. But just saying, well, the city doesn't know how to spend money, that's hurtful, and in my opinion, it's untrue. Now, the second half-cent, I know that wasn't on ordinance 944, but I want to talk about that a little bit. The sewer project adds a couple of sewer lines and a pump station on the other side of the bridge in the Morgan area. It's not the town of Morgan. It is the city limits of Maumell. And it feeds a sewer system to an underserved area of our very own community. Now, there has been some business interest in some of those properties over there, but when they find out they can't get sewer, they walk away. So we have, what is it, 120 acres available over there for commercial development. And that half-cent or that quarter-cent or portion, the sewer portion of the second half-cent tax would feed that area adequately and would allow for commercial development. The other portion of that second half-cent sales tax would go for the interchange. And there are a lot of points to make about that. Number one is there is the potential of over 1,000 new homes to be built along the Countess Massey extension. A lot of those plans have already been given to the city. They've been looked at. Plans are laid out, and this is going to materialize. If we don't have that other access to the freeway, all of that traffic is going to dump into the boulevard. And it's going to be worse than what we see today. Also, oh, and some of it's going to go through the Country Club of Arkansas. You know, we know that. So we want to protect those people as well. Another thing that we know, as part of the strategic plan study that was done, is that single-family dwellings don't provide enough revenue to support the needs of the city, and that there's going to come a cross point one of these days where the cost of maintaining our city is going to exceed the ability of single-family dwellings to support the revenue. We need commercial growth. Now, everybody wants this wonderful hometown feel that Maumell has. I do, too. When I moved into town, I wanted to be the last one. I wanted to shut the door behind me. But that's not going to happen. Maumell is going to continue to grow. So by developing at the third entrance, and there's been a lot of commercial interest in that, a lot of commercial interest, big-name type commercial interest in that area, if we can get that third interchange. There's a plan to annex properties on the other side of the freeway. So that would be a perfect place to have development that won't affect our hometown feel. It will bring in revenue to the city without congesting our streets even further. There's 310 acres of commercial development land over in that area. So there we go with a possibility for good revenue for the city. There's also 40 acres that could be rezoned along the tail end of Countess Massey at the far end. And that could be zoned commercial. I kind of call this like perfect development. Keep my hometown what it is, but bring in the revenue that we need to make our town continue to be what it is and to bring in the revenue that we need for any future needs of the city. There are a few general points, and I'm sorry, I'm taking a little bit more than three minutes. We are not financing alone. I did see the comments that some people say, you know, why should we have to pay for all of this? Well, the feds have given us a 20% match. They've given us $3 million. Private parties have put up $350,000 into the Countess Massey extension. North Little Rock has put in $350,000 for the rebuild of their section of that road. Pulaski County, $900,000 for the design of the Countess Massey extension. And I don't know how much money. I think it's in the millions by... And I don't know how much money, I think it's in the millions, by CAW and North Little Rock to extend water and sewer into those areas. So, we're not in this alone. The state will not promise us, I mean, the mayor is saying, well, not before 2021, but you know, the truth is, maybe not in 2021. There's no guarantee that we're gonna be on that budget. So, the further we go down the road, the more expensive it's gonna be, for one thing, and there is no promise that the state's gonna come through and give us more money. There has been some talk about a special election, and that is, I know, an uncomfortable thing for people, but I actually see it in the opposite light of what was presented. I see it as this is a Maumell issue. This is something Maumellians should focus on. I don't know how often you have gone into the voting booth, and there are so many things that you just kind of, okay, I'm worried about the senator, or I'm worried about my representative, or I'm worried about something to do with the school district. And so, you go in there focused on that and just vote no, no, no on everything else, or fail to vote on everything else. A special election would focus the citizens of Maumell, and I'll tell you, we will get the word out, there are lots of ways of getting the word out on a special election. So, we would put, and the special election would be held at no cost to Maumell taxpayers. There is a committee that's formed that will pay for the special election fully. I am speaking on behalf of the administrative arm of Maumell Vision for the Future. That is a group of business people, landowners, who are interested in developing the commercial aspect of the city. I'm here as an information conduit. I would like to take questions, I would like to research answers for you, and get those answers back to you. So, please like our page, Maumell Vision for the Future, and we'll be passing along more information as we go along. And that's all I have to say, unless you have some questions.
I do have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, you're actually speaking on behalf of this Maumell Vision for the Future?
Yes, sir.
Is that correct? Can you reveal who all's in your group?
I do have a list of names. Most of them are the property owners and business owners, you know, developers. I don't have a complete list. Tommy Wright is here, Alicia Gillen with the Chamber, Mr. Freeman, and Mr. Freeman's representatives, a fellow by the name of Mark Saviors, who represents the Brown property, some other property owners along, the Mayberries have a representative, Mr. M. has a representative on it, David Haas, developer, Mr. Edward Jackson is a representative for Mr. McGeorge, and then there's some other, the Grace Chee, Kim Properties daughter. These are the people who have formed the committee, and some of whom are going to be financing the special election, if one should occur.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Councilmember Williams, did you have a question?
She just answered my question about the committee.
Okay.
That's it.
I have one last card, it's from Mr. David Haas.
I'll be right back. They get off the record. Yeah, I'm David Haas, I live at 128 South Shore Drive here in Maumell. I moved here 22 years ago from Alaska. I was recruited as a psychiatrist to go up there and run a psychiatric hospital, help out for three years, and primarily trained, and they, she called me developer, I looked at her developer, big gag, but I'm, hopefully, of course, I'm a doctor, so you may be having negative feelings towards that, too. But I guess, number one, I came here most as a father, and trying to move my family to the best community that I knew of in Arkansas. I was recruited by St. Vincent's organization to run a psychiatric company 22 years ago. And my wife came to look at houses, so I looked, I wanted the churches, the schools, and what's the safe community. So, she, 51st House, we finally bought over on 128 South Shore Drive, where I still live right now. I am, my wife has put an ultimatum, I'm gonna, she deserves a new house, putting up with me for so long, so I am gonna try to build a new house out of the new subdivision there in Natural Trail Estates. I wanted to say, first of all, every time since I came here, I had my three kids, and we all had to go down the traffic, and even back then, when we started, you know, Maumell Boulevard, we had traffic problems getting to school on time, and when you had to go across the river, or whatever, if we didn't have public schools, and that fit for our children. Everybody's been complaining about the traffic. Now, we have, when I look at this thing, at this stage of the game, we have an opportunity to finally really do a third exit, and I guess, I was pretty shocked, listening to the mayor, that they won't even consider us till year 2021. And I think, I think we need to take charge of our own fate, instead of leave it up to the Republicans, the Democrats, independents, or whatever, and try not to get caught up in just personal battles or philosophies. And when it came down to, when I found out about, they're talking about election, I said, well, you know, why not wait and just do it in May? Then, I think there's a select group of people there, that's gonna be more, maybe the Republican base later, then we'll get more of the Democrat, Republican base in November. But the thing, I think this should be a nonpartisan vote, that we get out the information to everybody, and it shouldn't be Republicans, Democrats, where you like to pay taxes or don't. Nobody likes to pay taxes, but the bottom line is, we got the greatest country, we got the greatest community in the world, and I think, I think we'd do, I think it'd just be a mistake if we didn't do everything we can to make it a fair election, to educate all the community of Maumell, and to look at what goes out there. So, that's one of my reasons, maybe, for the special election, and I may not be wrong, that's just when I picked up, talking to Republican side, the Democrat side, and what happens on elections. I'd like it to not have a 20 voter, 20 things to vote on, but we have an issue, we've really studied, we have all the facts out there, I want to have enough time that we all know the facts, we communicate that to everybody in the community, and that they have a chance to really make up their own decision and not be swayed by somebody. The, I think waiting could be risky. Like I said, we may not ever get it in 21, even get started, and then, of course, your costs will probably double. They call me a developer, I'm basically really a visionary, and I tried to survive, to be honest with you, because back in 19, year 2000, I came here in 1995, 2000, I don't know if you remember, the stock market kind of crashed, and that's all, I had all my money in the stock market, and I lost over half of it. And that's when I decided to start just buying property in Maumell, in the Maumell area. And some of that includes North Little Rock, because of the Count Massey Road area. And so, I'm really not a full-time developer or anything, but I've just, you know, since 2000, I don't put extra money in the stock market, because I have no confidence that I really have a piece of land or something in my hand I can grab a hold of, and something that I can control, that I have some fate in my own destiny, so to speak. You know, it's like if you're a farmer. If you work hard and you plant right, and you learn, then you can produce something, and that's the same way we need to be here in Maumell. We have a great communities, one of the best communities in many states that I've been into, and I want us to consider that. By 40 interchange, when I looked at the tax, it's gonna be more of a sales tax. Most of my businesses, like I have a psychiatric business, and I have, you know, a child and adult psychiatry business, and have therapy, and therapists, and most, at least 70% of my people come from out of, come from out of Maumell. So, we bring revenues into Maumell when we expand. When we have that interchange out there, you're gonna have more and more businesses, like you've seen the future Chick-fil-A, for example, how busy it is, how the upgrade Sonic is, and they're coming here because our population is increasing. And once we open up that third entrance, it's gonna open up a whole new world of just the money, the tax money, revenues we'll get from the development out there at the interchange, we'll be paying, really, for what Maumell wants to do. We don't have to be paying for the taxes. So, you're putting it on the people that are spending money in Maumell, and I think it'd be a shame for us to miss this opportunity to do that. And I'm gonna be paying a lot of taxes, I pay taxes, and that's just the way it is. But I'm also blessed, you know, when you have things, and you try to do things right, but I think Maumell has handled things fiscally very well. I don't get up, and I'm not much of a Republican or a Democrat or Independent, because I'm out here working and trying to, my goal is to try to help people be happy and fulfill their destiny, and I try to take ugly property, property nobody wants, and I try to look at what's it gonna do in the future. And so, that's kind of where I am in my life and my career. And it's a lot of fun doing that, seeing things develop and grow and look pretty, and do good quality projects. The new business, that's probably all I need to really say at this time, other than, I think we need to realize that let's don't get hung up on a lot of what's happened in the past, except, you know, we all know we needed a third exit, we all know Maumell Boulevard is cramped, and it's only gonna get worse. We all know we can't depend on the government for somebody to take care and give us money for everything. And I like us to take our destiny in our own hands, and do it that way. So, thanks for listening to me, and if you have any questions afterwards or before, but that's just kind of how I see it. I just want to be fair, I want to be communicated, and just have the details worked out. And I don't know about all the bond stuff and where to get the money, but, you know, we can hopefully look at that later on with the time, but I think we need that interchange, and we do dramatically improve the quality of Maumell, and bring us a lot of revenues in, that we can do our projects and not be so hamstringing, struggling over what, $6 versus $12, when we're throwing away millions and millions of dollars in revenues. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Haas. That's all the comment cards I have on this matter. Are there any questions for the council, or from the council? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, let's see, kind of some housekeeping here. With all the talk about public safety and all that, is Councilmember Williams, are you going, are you gonna be recusing at all on this, or have you put any thought into this, as far as the discussions and voting on all this?
I don't know that it's necessary that I recuse myself on a general public safety issue.
Okay, I'd appreciate it. I'd appreciate any comments. City Attorney Norris, Mike.
I can look into this again. I put something in the council packet not long after Councilmember Williams joined the city council, but if memory serves, what the issue that she needed to look at when deciding whether or not to recuse was whether or not her spouse was going to receive a benefit specifically, and not whether public safety would increase.
Okay, so you don't see a problem with this, is that correct?
That's how I understood it, that if it's a general thing, then if it was specific towards Sam and his income and that kind of thing, then I would recuse myself, but as a general public safety issue, I think it's okay. That was my, that was my understanding early on.
That is my understanding. I can double-check and freshen up on that, but I'm fairly confident that was where we were at with that.
Right, it just felt like it was something we needed to make sure we've addressed.
Pardon me?
I just wanted to make sure that's something we've addressed here. I think, I think we can all agree that we need a third entrance, and that's something we've all been working toward, and trying to do it in the cheapest manner and the best manner possible, trying to get there as quickly as possible. It's been a frustration, I know, to the mayor and all of us. I've heard a lot of people talk about how the council has handled things physically well, or, I would say we, and I told the mayor I was gonna have my moment, but I think the city council was very short-sighted back in 2014, when we had, we were considering all those bond projects. I voted against doing any bond projects at the time, because it felt like we might, something might fall through on the interchange or something, where we needed the funds, and everybody else wasn't worried about that. So, I'm gonna have my moment. I guess I say, I told you so. So, we're in a jam now, we're gonna have to raise taxes to the residents possibly at some point. I'm sure hoping that Mr. Spivey and those folks can come up with something that allows us just to extend that millage, and it's not a tax increase. I don't necessarily have too much of a problem with replacing the community service fee with a half-cent tax, if that's approximately what we're raising through the community service fee. If we're taxing and getting more, then I have a little bit of a problem with it. But I don't like the rush rush of this, I don't like the fact that this hadn't been discussed in public forum before tonight, I don't remember anything in budget meetings. So, this is kind of a deal, and in fact, the mayor talked about, he and I had had some discussions a couple of months ago, he's talking about having a general election. I don't know if this is something that he's changed his mind on or not, but something's changed. I know we've been getting a lot of pressure from the development community to do something, but a special election, in my opinion, is just ramming a tax increase down the voters. So, I think we definitely need to consider changing this, if it goes through. I'll be, right now, I'm gonna vote no against all these ordinances. I just don't like the way it looks and smells, but I'm gonna be thinking about it some more as we go. I'd like to know if anybody else is opposed to him at this point.
Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Please understand that my comments are not necessarily just for me, but it's in behalf of the community that I represent. First of all, I think that, from Mr. MacPadden and Mr. Spivey, if I understood what they were telling me, that our first question is to find out if our bonds have been paid down sufficiently so that we can renew them. I may not have understood that correctly, did I hear that correct? So, that's the first question we're going to answer, if I understand, Mr. Mayor. Secondly, insofar as the amount of money that the one-half sales tax is gonna bring in, that really is a matter of conjecture. We hope that it will, but we have no real foundation to say that as a fact. I have said in this community, in this council, a number of times, that Maumell must absolutely grow. You look at Celine County, you look at Conway, you look at North Little Rock, Little Rock, everybody in the world is growing but us. So, if we don't grow, we're going to die. I have no objections exactly to what's going on, but I am very concerned, again, it's my job to know what's on the city council agenda. I've not seen this, and I have not read it, and I cannot, and I will not vote for it in favor of it tonight, if a vote is gonna be called. Also, what I, if we're going to do this, I would think that we would want to hold a citywide one, two, or three meetings between now and any kind of special election, to make certain that the people of Maumell have the opportunity to, we work for them, they don't work for us. Regardless of what we think we want, we owe it to them, and so, my obligation is to them, whether anybody else likes it or not. So, that's my point about it. I'm not, I can support it if I make certain that all the numbers are out there and we all understand it, but razzle-dazzle, I've gone through this once before, and I say this in all due indifference to my, what I hope is my friend, Birch Johnson. We had an election way, way back that was touted as a tax that was specifically for the fire and police department, but when it came for the election, two weeks later, there was not one word about that, anything about fire and police, and we own that collection, that tax today, and we will own it for the rest of our lives, because there is no sundown close. And I've understood that tonight, it seems to be rather strange, we've had to explain exactly what this one does and what that one does, and that should be in here. What exactly does it do, and what does it not do? So, I'm a little confused about it myself, I know I get all emotional about it, and I apologize to the council, but this is serious, and I'm, that's my viewpoint. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Holt. The tax, the historical numbers for the tax, 2012, a one-cent sales tax collected $2,000,039. In 2013, a one-cent sales tax In 2013, a one-cent sales tax collected $2,113,579. In 2014, it collected $2,170,845. In 2015, it collected $2,281,232. In 2016, it collected $2,495,044. That makes the average from 2012 to 2016 of $2,214,202. And so basically, if you take that half, well, the 12-month collections from 12 through, for 2017 was $1.7 million roughly. But anyway, so you can assume that we will collect $1,181,000 based on historical data of the sales tax. So that is where those numbers are coming from. Also, you mentioned that a public forum needed to be held. There will be several public meetings held if the council chooses to move forward with an election, no matter when it is, to discuss and get the information out in front of the people. You're seeing it for the first time tonight because that's the process. That's what we talked about before. This is the first reading of an ordinance and it's a public forum. Every council meeting is a public meeting. Therefore, the public's welcome to attend at the next meeting on November the 20th and the next meeting on December the 4th. So it is a public forum. And I do want to address one other thing is there was a question about why hurry? Well, I don't think we can wait till the general election. I think that just delays it too long. But the difference between a special election, we had a special election in 2012 that only had city of Mammell projects on it. 16.82% of the people voted at that time. Okay? But the primary in 2014, only 18.26% voted in Plaski County and all of Plaski County. 18.26% voted. That came straight from the Election Commission's website. I was told, or we heard earlier, there was a 26% average at a primary voting, but in Plaski County, 18.26% voted in 14. That's only 1.4% difference between a special election and a primary. So, I mean, in my mind, it's kind of a mute point, 1.4% of the people different. I mean, that's kind of mute in my mind. But, you know, and there is no cost to the city. So, you know, I think that that speaks to why you could have a special election.
Why would you change your mind from a general election to a special election? Or did I misunderstand?
The general election, the general election was because if we wait on November of next year, then you couldn't start collecting it till April of the following year. And it just, I mean, it delays the process just another year and a half.
I just remember you being comfortable at least with May, but...
Well, but I looked at the May numbers on the Election Commission's website.
All right. I've got my light on.
Okay, all right. Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I just, I agree with everything you said. Councilmember Holt, I appreciate that. And I got constituent phone calls today and the majority of them asked that we slow things down. A lot of them heard that emergency thing and were panicking about that too. But anyway, they were asking for public forums and hearings and that sort of thing. Thank you, that's all I've got right now.
And that's, the emergency clause, I think scared people that was going to be voted on tonight. There was never any intention for it to be voted on tonight. If that was the case, you would have seen on the agenda itself that said, we asked for a second and third reading tonight. We do that and, yeah, so...
I forget what it was, but people that don't see this stuff all the time, you know...
And I understand that. And there was, like I say, there was some misinformation given on Facebook too that said we were going to do a vote on it tonight. So, and so that scared some people. All right, so is there any more questions on ordinance number 944 by the council? Okay, if not, we'll move on to the next ordinance, which is ordinance 945. And Madam City Clerk, if you could read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 945, an ordinance calling a special election in the City of Mammell, Arkansas on the question of levying a citywide one-half of 1% sales and use tax for the purpose of operating and maintaining the city's public safety facilities and operations, securing repayment of bonds issued to finance capital improvements, and prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, are there any questions in ordinance number 945? Councilmember Mosley?
Is this the one that goes to the community service fee or for the bonds?
This goes to the, this, well, it doesn't go to the community service fee, but it goes to the city's police and fire departments, public safety and that sort of thing. So it's a sales tax that would hopefully replace the community service fee.
Okay, this is the community service fee one. Okay, is there, I would appreciate it if any council members tonight would not vote to replace that. I'd appreciate if they'd say so tonight so that we could have that information.
And Councilmember Vaporsen?
In the discussions that we've had about this, to my knowledge, everybody's on board with this. It shocks me to hear you say you've never heard about this before.
I have not.
I don't know where you've been in all of our discussions or that you fail to remember what the mayor told you in July. You know, I'm a little taken aback.
I just, there hadn't been any public discussions. The mayor said about a month ago, he may be proposing a special deal, but that's all we talked about.
And I want to say this too. March 13th is 18 weeks from tomorrow. That's over four months. There's no rush here for anything. Nobody's trying to push anything through. It's been a great process this evening. Everybody voicing their opinions and we'll do this two more times before we vote. But I've been impressed with the folks that have spoken tonight. And just remember, I'm the only preacher in the room, but there have been a couple of others out here tonight that have gone at it in passion. I love passion. It excites me. But, no, I, Mr. Mayor, could we take a quick, could I ask my fellow aldermen if they're in favor of the city service fee or is that not proper protocol? If it would appease Mr. Mosley and the general public?
Mr. City Attorney?
Maybe they're opposed to...
It's not a binding vote, but they're...
No, no. If you're in favor of dropping the city service fee if this could replace it?
Okay. I don't have a problem with you asking that question.
Okay.
I do too.
Okay.
I have not heard all the...
Yes, sir.
All the information from my constituents.
Right.
We have three different ordinances to hear it.
That's fine.
And I'm not in favor of this pre-vote stuff.
Yeah.
You know, where I want your opinion on how you're going to vote. I will tell you how I'm going to vote when it's time to vote. That's how I will operate.
My concern is that it was represented that it would replace, and I just want to make sure there's not a...
Well, I'd like to see that language in here as well.
I'd like to see it too.
But I'm not interested in pre-channeling my vote.
I understand completely.
And here's the problem. What if one tax passes? What if the other tax passes, but this tax doesn't pass? But then people say, well, the council took a vote and said they're going to eliminate this. So, I mean, there's, you know, there's a possibility that misinformation could be put out there again. Now, the community service fee is billed December, March, June, September. It's when it's billed. The tax would go into effect if it passed. I mean, that's, you know, if it's passed a special election in March, it would go into effect July 1. So you would actually have to bill in June for one month of community service fee because there wouldn't be a replacement started until July 1. And you wouldn't actually see those proceeds until they're collected in July, so you'd see them in September. So the first time you'd see them. But I think you could still probably do that in the sense that, okay, the minute the sales tax starts, the community service fee cuts off because not everybody pays the minute we send them a bill either. So, you know, there's some little bit of lag there sometimes. So, I mean, I think, you know, that would be the best thing that you could get out of the deal. But I do think if you take a vote and then one tax passes, the other doesn't, and the wrong one passes, then you may have some issues. City Attorney Norris?
Councilmember Mosley, I just wanted to be crystal clear that there's nothing in any of these three ordinances that removes the community service fee. That would either need to be done through subsequent action of the city council, either after the election, before the election with some sort of contingent ordinance, or a resolution stating the intent of the council to subsequently remove that from there. And so there have been folks saying they're not seeing that in here.
Right.
And it's not in here.
It's not in there.
Correct.
And that's my whole point is I think the residents are going to be more comfortable voting for something like that if...
It would be on...
If that's really going to happen, you know, that there's no room for error.
I think it's difficult to put it in the ordinance, but...
Well, we'll think about it.
All right.
And to clarify, I wouldn't recommend that it be added into these ordinances, but if the council wanted to consider a separate ordinance or a separate resolution, at the very least, I think that does go further with the public than simply saying, we plan on doing that if you vote a tax in place.
Exactly. Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Vaporsen?
After hearing Councilmember Kelly and then what you just said, I think it's unwise to include that verbiage in here because we don't know. As you said, if one passes and one doesn't, we can't make that call. It would be a false assumption on our part. And we really can't put an ordinance resolution in place right now because this special election's not for 18 weeks unless we put one on the books and said, you know, this is for the first city council meeting after May the 13th, should they pass, which I have no problem with. I don't know how that works. But we do want the community to have good faith in us in saying if these go through, we have no problem with this, but we can't say that or do that right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Holt?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If at any time that it comes down to that decision about to replace this or not, a resolution would not be satisfactory at all because a resolution is not binding. So I would want it in an ordinance that becomes a law, period. And again, Mr. Mayor, make sure, I want to make sure I understood. It's just a matter of mathematics. If we replace the $68 every four months, every three months for our fee, you told me that we will still pay what?
You, well, you're not replacing the $68. You're only replacing $6 a month. So you're taking $18 out of that off of that $68 you're referring to. That's a three-month bill. Because the 1550 plus tax is your garbage collection per month.
So we're only reducing it $6 a month, I mean, $6 a fee?
$6 per month for the community service fee, which is $72 a year.
So we're not, okay, okay.
The garbage is a separate fee.
Okay.
And that is not a community service fee and not a portion of it.
Okay. I'm wondering if some people are believing, are we replacing the $68? And if that's the case, we're wrong. But I'm just wondering if somebody is thinking that, is all I'm asking.
I don't know if they're thinking that or not. I can't answer that.
We need to make that clear about it.
Well, that's why I've said several times, it's only the $6 tonight.
Okay. Okay, so we're paying the taxes, but we're only getting $6 off of what we're paying now. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. What is our annual fees that we collect on the community service fee? What's the total?
Around $700,000.
Okay. So here's the point. We cut that without having these ordinances in place. It's a $700,000 pay cut. Tell me which services we're going to cut. So that's why I don't telegraph my votes. That's why we get all the facts before we move on. Thank you, Mayor.
If I understood the city attorney correctly, we'd do it contingent, you know, or whatever.
We'll do it when it's time.
Are there any other questions on ordinance number 945 or comments? Okay, if not, we'll move on to ordinance number 946. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled ordinance number 946, an ordinance calling for a special election in the City of Mammell, Arkansas on the question of issuing bonds under amendment number 62 to the Constitution of the State of Arkansas for the purpose of financing the cost of capital improvement, levying a one-half of 1% sales and use tax for the purpose of retiring such bonds, prescribing other matters pertaining thereto.
Okay, on ordinance number 946, there are two ballot questions. One is for the interchange on Interstate 40 and the other is for a sewer project near the Morgan Interchange or in the Morgan Interchange area of the city. So there's two separate questions there. It is a temporary tax or a sunset tax, if you want to call it that. It doesn't say that in the ordinance anywhere because that's something else everybody was pointing out today. It doesn't say that. But it talks about it's used for the retirement of those bonds. And you heard Mr. Spivey and Mr. McFadden state that that's all that can be used for is to retire those bonds. And so I want to make that very clear. And if I stated something wrong, I'd appreciate one of y'all correcting me on that. But, so this is a, for lack of a better word, a temporary tax that would only last until the bonds are paid off. Councilmember Mosley?
I think you're going to have a hard time with the sewer improvement thing with the voters. I think this thing would, if it makes it to an election, I think this would fare better with just the interchange. And I'm not sure why there's $15 million, 15.5 if the interchange is going to cost 13 points.
Well, we're trying to make sure we have $14 million in construction fund and that's the bond issuance cost. And Ms. Burnett can explain that better than I could, but that's the cost that if only one of them passes, that's the amount that we have to have in there to have $14 million in project funds.
Okay. But both these, both these things are on here together, right?
What do you mean on there together?
Well, I mean, if you vote for this, you're getting both.
No, that is not correct. There's a for and against for both projects.
Okay.
There's two projects.
Okay.
And that's based on Bond Council's recommendation.
Okay.
And advice and everything else, so...
It actually goes for one, I think, but the other?
That's correct. Yeah. So technically, when you, if the council chooses to adopt all these ordinances, there will be three questions on the ballot. One is for the tax, that's a permanent tax that would pay for public safety. And then there would be these two questions that would allow for bonds to be issued and then paid for for two capital projects, two separate projects.
Okay, all right, thank you.
So it's not like there's going to be one question on the ballot. There's going to be three. Councilmember Vaporsen?
I was going to ask Councilmember Mosley real quick why he thought that the northern end of town may not survive this. What were your thoughts?
Well, it's just, there just seems to be a lot of confusion about the sewer thing. They're wondering, I get people wondering if we're subsidizing developers and that sort of thing. And that's a good question. You know, who should be paying for that?
Well, we've had some big name people, big box stores. And again, our Mammell Forward says that there's $3 million of annual revenue to be realized from that end of town. And the reason it hasn't been realized is because we've not, we've not put sewer in place.
I don't know that for a fact for 100%.
If you read it, you would. It's there.
The problem is the current pump station in that area is not sufficient to handle any additional commercial uses.
You know, I guess the question is, is who should be paying? You know, maybe there is a sewer needed to get somebody on that land, but should it be the property owner, the Browns, or whoever, should they be paying for it?
Right.
Now, that's the question.
And that's a good question, but up until this point, nobody has. And I guess maybe if the revenue generated is going to be the benefit of the city of Mammell, we shouldn't balk at something that is going to be paid for in a year's time by the revenue noticed from that area. So, I mean, we're talking long-term, very, very beneficial for us. It'll probably sit vacant for a long time. I don't know. You'd have to ask Ms. Keller how many people, I don't know if she's here tonight, have looked at that property and walked away because it's not ready.
I'll have some discussions with her.
Yeah. But no, read the strategic plan because it's all outlined in there quite deep. But no, read the strategic plan because it's all outlined in there quite detailed, pages and pages about that part of town and the revenue to be realized from there.
I understand that. But, all right, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Holt?
In defense of my fellow alderman, Steve Mosley, I think that he is about as astute as anybody in this council on the facts of what goes on, so he doesn't need much lecture on having to read anything. Also, I believe that something like this should have been notified two weeks in advance and say that we will have this, so that we have time. If I remember correctly, well, we got the email from, on my phone, that our local office computer was down, and so, we didn't get it Thursday. I have no idea when we got it. But I want to make certain that I do write for the city and write for the citizens to have a thorough knowledge of this. And I apologize, but I'm not prepared to vote for it, anything. So, anyway, we'll have to discuss it further.
Well, Councilmember Holt, it came out around noon on Friday is when it came out. And you're not being asked to vote on anything tonight on these. You've got four weeks to study the issue and meet with whoever you need to meet with before it should come to a vote.
I'll try to be prepared, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments on ordinance number 946? Not, these will be on second reading at the next council meeting, which is November the 20th. So, if you have questions or you have comments that are things that we need to find out for you before that time, if you would let us know as soon as possible, please do that. Moving on to the next item, and we will let our guests leave tonight so that they can go home and spend some time with their families. So, thank y'all very much for attending, gentlemen and lady. Next item is a resolution, so we'll get off ordinances and get on resolutions. Resolution number 2017-26, approving Metro Little Rock Alliance contract. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, County of Plaski, State of Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled resolution number 2017-26, approving an Economic Development Service contract between the City of Mammell and Metro Little Rock Alliance.
Okay. Metro Little Rock Alliance is a seven-county?
Twelve.
Twelve-county, okay. I shortened it a little bit. It's a 12-county, there it is, it's on here. It's a 12-county coalition that helps promote all of central Arkansas so that where when we compete, it's not Mammell competing against Memphis or Dallas, or it's the entire central Arkansas region to make the population match what is in the larger cities. And we've been a member ever since I've been mayor, and I don't know how long before that, so at least 11 years, we've been a member of Metro Little Rock Alliance. And they provide us with support when we have site selectors come to town, they help, all of our properties are on their website and all that. And so, if Ms. Keller wants to come up and help me out on this, she's more familiar with it than I am. So, I actually served on their board for a little while, but it's been a few years ago.
Judy Keller, Director of Community and Economic Development. So, this is not a membership, it's a contract. And we've had it with them since before I took this position. And the last time we made a payment was 2014, the last time we signed annual contracts. And because of the lawsuit questioning the validity of economic development contracts between cities and economic development organizations, we were put on hold, we have not made a payment since 2014. But we have continued to receive the services. So, they provide leads, they market all over the state and internationally, they make visits to companies out of state to try to recruit them to Arkansas. There was a study done before this organization was formed that found out that we couldn't compete as Little Rock, but we could compete with a larger population. And so, that's why it's a 12-county alliance. So, the amount of the population is more competitive with larger communities. And so, and our workforce comes from many counties. So, we have not paid since 2014, but we've continued to receive the services. So, I would like, Caleb and I have been working on this and the mayor to make sure that we are following in the new state laws with the contract. And that's what the resolution shows. And the contract is attached, and I think we've covered everything in the new state law. I'm asking that you approve the resolution so that we can pay the fees for this year because I've budgeted for it every year, hoping this would be resolved. But again, we have not paid since 2014, but we've continued to get the services. So, for an example, they give us leads for Sinneas, started out as a Metro Little Rock Alliance lead. Dillard's was a lead between AEDC and MLRA that they worked that project with us. When we get an RFI, they help prepare those. If I have trouble finding information, they share that with me, even though maybe somebody else in the county is also submitting a project, a property. So, we actually, if we're both submitting, we might both provide different parts of the RFI. So, we work together, it's a partnership, and we couldn't do it on our budget, what they did to market the area. So, any questions?
Okay. City Attorney Norris wanted to say something.
I just wanted to clarify that, so, this money's already in the budget, but the state law, which is based on the constitutional amendment, requires that the council approve this yearly, either by resolution or ordinance. And so, this is something that you'll see reoccurring every year. In fact, I anticipate you'll probably be seeing this one and a similar one next month as we're dealing with 2018. These contracts cannot auto-renew, so it's a year-to-year deal. And that's designed so that the council's able to assess that they're getting their money's worth. So, when we drafted this contract, if you look in there and read the contract, which is always boring, you'll see specifically the sort of services that they're supposed to do, very specific things, as well as including having their, was it their executive director come down and give reports to the city council as to their efforts, what they're doing to promote the area. And Mammell specifically would be this council's concern.
And we actually already get those reports at our quarterly meeting. We get how many leads there have been and how many site visits. And we've had two voting members, they're restructuring a little bit. So, we'll have one voting member, and it will be the person in this position. So, I mean, we have a say-so in how the monies are spent and the marketing efforts. But we've been doing this, we've been renewing it every year. We've never been on an automatic renewal. We've had a contract each year, so that doesn't really change. The thing that changes is now it comes before you, and then MLRA has to present a report to you.
Okay. Councilmember Saunders?
Thank you, Mayor. City Attorney, I had two questions, and the city attorney has already answered one of them, if it's in this year's budget, and I believe you stated that it is.
Yes, it is.
The second question is, is in the budget that you submitted for next year, did you go ahead and include it then, or is that something we're going to have to add in?
No, I've already added it.
You have, okay, okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I know we pay the local Chamber of Commerce a couple of thousand a year, is that correct?
We've paid 1,500 in the past, but again, we have not renewed our contract with them, but we still received all the services. And in fact, they're doing additional things. So, I did ask, they asked for an increase, I didn't ask for as much as they asked for, but in the new budget, I did ask for $2,500.
Is there any other chamber money that we pay out to a bigger area, or is this kind of it?
Well, we were, we had a contract with Little Rock Chamber also, but because MLRA is a wing of the Little Rock Chamber, it's under, in their offices and all, we opted not to renew that contract or ask you for that because it's a wing of the Little Rock Chamber. The money that we would normally spend, though, on the Little Rock, I added that to the budget for next year for MLRA because there are other things that they're adding to it that they will, like their executive director would come out and spend a half a day working on a project solely with us, but there's an extra fee. So, the money that we normally did with Little Rock Chamber, I added that to the MLRA budget in case we needed it. Does that answer your question?
Yes, I think so.
A little more than.
I think so. I was just trying to figure out how many economic development entities we were paying money to.
Just the Metro Little Rock Alliance and the Mammell Chamber.
That's all I need, thank you.
And Councilmember Mosley, from this point forward, or really from the number of months ago, the council will be made aware and would have to vote to approve every one of those economic services contracts.
Good, thank you.
Thank you.
Hang on, hang on. Councilmember Timmons?
Okay, so, I see we haven't paid for what, three years?
We haven't paid since 2014.
Okay, so, the $5,000, is that for this year? Do we have to pay for the other three years?
Yes, that's for this year.
So, are we paying in arrears, or do we just pay the $5,000?
I'm only asking for you to pay for 2017.
Okay.
I'm not going back that far.
Okay.
They understood the predicament that everybody was in, and they've been very understanding about that. And like I said, we've still had all the services that they offered when we were paying.
Okay.
So, yeah, just for 2017. But I'll be back next month for 2018. Thank you.
Wait a minute. Councilmember Vaporsen?
I just want to make a motion to approve resolution 2017-26.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution number 2017-26. Is there any discussion on that motion? If not, all those in favor signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Next item is resolution 2017-27 regarding surplus property. Madam City Clerk, if you'd read that by title only?
A resolution of the City Council of the City of Mammell, Plaski County, Arkansas, resolution number 2017-27, a resolution to approve the disposal of city surplus property.
The resolution states that the disposal of city property valued over $1,000 must be approved by the council. It's actually $100. So, that's why this is before you, because they do say the equipment is valued to be less than $1,000. So, but it's still anything over $100. So, this is a Dodge service truck, a 2003 model, that Public Works wants to get rid
Motion to approve resolution 2017-27.
Seconded.
We have a motion and second to approve resolution 2017-27. Is there any discussion on the motion? If not, all those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Motion passes. Moving on to Mayor's comments. Don't forget, this Friday, November the 10th, at 4:00 PM, Councilmember Saunders has done a great job of preparing the veterans ceremony, and so, we'd like to have a large attendance come out. Weather's going to be beautiful, regardless of what it's doing, it's going to be beautiful. So, if you've got time, and we're doing it on the 10th, that's the day that the city has the holiday, basically. And Councilmember Saunders, I talked about it, back when we set the date, kind of, there could have been a football game at 4:00, and nobody would care anyway, I don't think, if there was a football game at 4:00. But we didn't know when that football game was going to be set, so we thought it might hurt the attendance. But that's why we've done it at 4:00 on the 10th. Do you want to give any update, Councilmember Saunders?
I'd just like to say one thing. I'd like to thank Neil Moore, he has contacted me for information concerning the Veterans Day ceremony, and he's willing to put, and has already made arrangements to put that promotion information into his column in the newspaper. And that's good for the city because it's a city event, so I just wanted to compliment you. That's all, Mayor.
All right, thank you very much. Everybody, please try to come out. Don't forget, we have a budget meeting next Tuesday night, November the 14th, at 6:00 PM in the Blue Room to go over some really exciting stuff. And then, also, the Mammell Youth Council Haunted House and Carnival, they raised over $4,600 on the two nights that they did that to help support their efforts. And that's the most they've ever raised, so, so, yeah. But it was... The funny thing is you're sitting there watching people come out of this haunted house, and some of them, I mean, they sit down or whatever, I mean, they have a reaction, you know, they're just out of there, and they're relieved or whatever. But then, one of them was asked, "Was it scary?" And they're like, "No, it wasn't scary." But the person sitting next to them goes, "It was really scary," you know? So, it just depends on how you deal with that. But then, the carnival, which is for the little kids, a bounce house and other things, it was packed every night, too. So, it's a great opportunity, and I don't know if y'all remember or not, but it was kind of raining a little bit on Halloween, so that may have ran some of the trick-or-treaters in, but I think they may have came over to our carnival early and did that, or the Youth Council's carnival. So, really good job. And I got to bring another one, one other thing to y'all's attention. I received an email late last night, well, 7:00, I don't know if that's late for y'all, but it was late for me, asking me to bring something to the council. I let the gentleman know that I would bring it up at the November 20th meeting because I didn't want to bring something to request a vote on something. It's similar to what Councilmember Holt was talking about, he doesn't like me to bring something if you don't have time to study it. But let me just tell you a little bit about it so I can kind of brief you on what's going to happen. The ARP does a, they want to offer citizens of Mammell free tax preparation, but what they are is they're looking for space to do that. So, on a Friday, starting in mid-January through April the 15th, they will provide free tax preparation from 9:00 AM until 3:00 PM, but they require Wi-Fi internet connection, and they are looking for a space that could accommodate three or four volunteers and the taxpayers. They contacted me earlier, and I recommended they go to the library, but the library's in a remodeling project and all that. So, now, they're asking for the city to provide that space. And so, I'm going to look at it in the next couple of weeks and see if we have a space that we can provide them, and then, it's going to be up to the council to decide if we give them that space or not. They're providing a free service. It says that, and I'll provide this email later, but it says that the, somewhere in here, it talks about, "You don't have to be an ARP. We offer the free service to all ages to help them in filing their annual income tax returns. We will prepare and electronically file federal and state income taxes at no charge at the taxpayer. All the volunteers have to pass an IR exam to be qualified to prepare returns. There are some limits determined on a case-by-case basis as to the complexity of the returns that we will prepare." So, I'm assuming it's got to be a fairly simple return for them to prepare it. But they will operate from 9:00 to 3:00 on Fridays only, from mid-January until April the 15th. So, I'm going to look and see if we've got a place available, but it's going to be up to the council to decide if they're granted that space or not. Next item is Planning Commission Report. Who had that? Yeah, there was. Last month, there was. Yeah, there's no meeting next, this month coming up. Well, nobody remembers who had the Planning Commission Report? All right. Councilmember comments? Councilmember Mosley?
Yeah, I wanted to mention to my legislative oversight committee members, I've been trying to, I went by legislative audit about a week ago and asked them if they would send somebody out here to visit with our committee. And they surprisingly responded that, they said they don't do that. So, I'm going to make a follow-up call and find out if perhaps they'd meet with me if I came down there and I could ask them a few questions and report back to everybody. But anyway, apparently, they aren't actively selling their services or whatever as far as an annual audit. The other thing I wanted to mention was I went to the CAW, the Central Arkansas Water Academy, last Thursday, and I would strongly encourage anybody to take them up on that next time around. That is the most interesting thing that I've done in a long time. They took us on a bus, we went out to the watersheds, they discussed the watersheds, the type of environment that's good for the water out there, that's, you know, the trees, the grass, all kinds of things. And they talked about security and safety, and we, I got to see how they treat stuff at the water plant. We went into a water tower, we didn't climb into it, but we went, we went, we were down underneath it, and we, it was just a very, very interesting thing. Probably, Tad Bohannon spoke at lunch, and he addressed a lot of interesting issues like the Pegasus Pipeline and things like that, that gave me some comfort about that thing out there. He talked about the ability for them to mitigate any problems, that there is such a leakage if that ever does start up again. But he said they were actively monitoring that as to whether it was going to be starting up again, and they're going to try not to let it get started up again. But anyway, I just encourage anybody to go to that if they have a chance. But anyway, I'd just encourage anybody to go to that if they have a chance. Very interesting in the future. They do, they're gonna do it annually now, and it's open to the press or anybody. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Mosley. Councilmember Williams?
I'd just like to let everybody know that our next meeting for the All-Inclusive Playground Committee will be the 13th at 6:00 at the Community Center. And we met last, last time at Burns Park at their, their new playground out there. It's got some great ideas. We're moving forward with it. Councilmember Anderson was adamant that we move forward with it. And I'd like to thank my fellow councilwoman, Ms. Timmons here, for filling in very nicely for Councilmember Anderson. And we are moving forward with it, and we're pretty excited about it. It's gonna be awesome. And everybody's invited to attend.
Councilmember Vaporsen?
Just wanted us to not forget him. He's been in the hospital for four weeks now.
Yes.
Not because he wants to be. Not been able to see the kids. It's been really, really rough on them, and a lot of people have helped them. But keep him in our thoughts and prayers. I text him all the time. He doesn't text back a lot because he's wiped out.
Right.
But, but keep him and Kim and the kids in your prayer. I, I know that'd be, mean an awful lot to them. Just wanted to remind us of that.
All right. Councilmember Timmons?
Hometown Thanksgiving.
Yes.
Thanksgiving Day. At the Center on the Lake. 11 till 1:30. We have a meeting Wednesday at 6:00 at the Center on the Lake. All is welcome. You have any questions, call myself or Marion Coney.
6:00?
6:00.
Meeting for what?
To plan?
Okay.
Logistics and...
It, it's not that all volunteers need to be there?
No. No. But you can come if you like.
Where's the location of that?
Thanks, but...
Center on the Lake.
The center for the meeting also?
Yes.
Okay. All right.
Okay, bye. Nicole.
Okay. All right. Anything else? Councilmembers? Mr. City Attorney?
Nothing.
Madam City Clerk?
No, sir.
Okay, if there's no other business to come from the council, I'd entertain a motion to adjourn. Go here a second? All of those in favor, please signify by saying yes.
Yes.
Any opposed, say no. Meeting is adjourned.